All right, good evening. Welcome to the April 26, 2023 meeting of the Dover School Committee, Sherburne School Committee, and the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, and I call this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. We are pleased to hold this open meeting at Dover Sherburne Middle School this evening, and we are also live streaming with DSC TV. Please note that the meeting is also being recorded. First on our agenda this evening is community comments, and we have provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment but for whom it is not possible or preferred to attend in person this evening. Please remember that community comments are an opportunity for members of the school committees to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business, and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three school districts. Is there anyone here with us or on the Zoom who would like to make a community comment tonight? Please, if so. All right. Ma'am, would you like to introduce yourself?
My name is Maria Reese. I've lived on Pine Street in Dover for 32 years now. Good to meet all of you this evening. I've been a few years away from this kind of discussion. I have a master's degree in clinical social work and a private practice treating individuals and adults. Raising my two kids, now 26 and 31, in Dover, my community and school system work together, assuming the best while focusing on providing kids with an excellent education and core values that would support them in fulfilling their life. Recently, I've learned many Dover Sherburne families have had a very different experience due to the direction of maybe the school system. That's why I'm here. The following are concerns and questions many residents and I have related to parental rights and freedom of expression. Is it time for this administration to step back and critically reevaluate its direction as related to childhood development and the well-being of all children? We know middle school is a time of development where anxiety and desire to belong and suggestibility is high. Why was a slideshow espousing gender identity theory though not including heterosexuality in the lobby of the middle school? Have you considered that confusion and pressure is a likely byproduct when presenting a menu of identity options itself, an entirely new and untested construct? An all-school assembly at the high school provided an open mic for kids to come up sexually, or so I understand, and resulting in tears and confusion. Was any of this deemed appropriate by school leadership? Why a rainbow club at Chickering and a Pride Hill Club at Pine Hill? These aren't babies. Over the past three weeks, which is really how I've kind of learned about a lot of this, teachers, parents, and students, I've learned, are afraid to express opinions that diverge from promoted ideological narratives for fear of retribution, being labeled racist or homophobic, losing employment. I've also learned four families of young children just this month were leaving the system altogether out of frustration. So I ask you, is true diversity of opinion being erased, considered? Are you listening to concerned parents? Just ask the question. This month, two community school administration meetings were held by Zoom instead of in-person for safety reasons. This language really surprised me as I was listening. It was dangerous. I learned in one meeting kids are not to share about their vacations in the name of fairness or equity. Where is the trust in a teacher's ability to be nuanced, kind, and inclusive? I'm just concerned. We have entrusted you with the care of our children to prepare them to succeed in countless and varied ways in a complex world while considering the inputs and values of their families and of our community. You're elected for this reason, not for activism or moral enlightenment. Introducing complex choices and new social constructs currently greatly debated by adults is best done measured and carefully. Consider indoctrination not in education may be taking precious time and resources away from students, resulting in division, anxiety, confusion, and suffering in some cases. I ask that you please consider redrawing your lines of your blueprint, and perhaps it's time to attend more simply to what's always mattered as you perform these critically important jobs you're paid and elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Are there other community comments here this evening? Yes?
Hi, Kail Murphy, One Town Line Road, Sherburne. I'm a former school committee member, positive, and both a president and CSA vice president. Although my three sons have been out of DS for almost 10 years now, I feel compelled to show up again and ask questions because the DS schools have, in my opinion, completely lost their way. Question number one: Why is the administration presenting DESI frameworks and guidelines as mandates? The administration has presented DEI implementation as simply following mandated federal and state laws, but that is not completely true. For example, at the January 17 Joint School Committee meeting, the administration presented an equity update which cited a 2021 DESI curriculum document. The first paragraph of the DESI document states, quote, "Decisions about curricula and instructional materials are largely a matter of local control. The state provides guidance documents and resources to inform district planning," end quote. However, in that presentation, the administration conveniently left out that paragraph and represented a long list of guiding frameworks as mandates. I urge this committee to do the research. You must understand the difference between laws, mandates, and framework guidance. The DS administration is not just following mandates. This administration is misrepresenting mandates in order to push an agenda that many of us in the DS community do not support. Question number two: Why is the administration encouraging division in our schools? The 3:30 DEI curriculum meeting was changed from being in-person to a webinar. Superintendent Beth McCoy stated, quote, "Some of our community members expressed that they felt unsafe at previous meetings," end quote. And Pine Hill principal, Dr. Barbara Brown, said, quote, "Psychological safety is critical," unquote, as the reason the meeting was to be held online, among others. The meeting was a curriculum meeting. What was the administration presenting that was making DS parents afraid to attend? This is the same curriculum being taught to our students, yet parents are too fragile to hear this curriculum described in person? What is happening here? When my sons were at DS, I remember attending curriculum meetings that were academically awe-inspiring. We left the meetings proud and excited to be part of DS. We weren't afraid. Question number three: Why is this committee also fostering division? This committee is responsible for writing a guiding policy for the DS school system. You can stop the DEI implementation as it has been presented thus far and enact a reasoned approach. DS students in the community need you to lead the administration, not just follow it. I am imploring the committee, do your job, stop the chaos, anger, and disappointment, and restore faith in our schools. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Others?
Hi, I'm Nicholas Hawks. First of all, I got to tell you that the community had a lot of courage today to say what you guys said. I'm impressed. What I'm not impressed with is obviously the big drop that we've seen in the school rankings. It's really, how do you go from number one to number nine? I don't get it. And I see people are actually running for reelection on the school committee. We're talking about reelecting people that have been failures, right? You guys have failed as school committee members. I know that some of you are probably on the fence on some of these things. I really hope you guys can consider reeling some of this stuff in, because I'm frankly concerned. We have these very divisive teachings, this inclusion stuff. We never get answers to it. I don't understand. We're focusing on the wrong things. What happened to standards? What happened to the traditional way of doing things? What we're doing is focusing on how to divide students. We're focusing on how to create disunity in our students. We're manufacturing hatred towards white members of this community. We're focusing on all of the wrong things instead of trying to build a community. It's very frankly disgusting to me that we had these Zoom meetings, I think you were talking about it earlier. I mean, we couldn't get our questions answered. It was so ridiculous, these cherry-picked questions that we had answered. It just, you did not answer any of the foundational questions that parents had. You don't know how many people, dozens of parents contacted me and said, wow, thank you for standing up for us. And I just don't even understand. Nobody asked a critical question on this? Nobody has anything negative to say about this implementation? We can't look across the country and see how destructive this is to young children's minds? And then somebody mentioned the Rainbow Club at the elementary school level? We're talking to six- and seven-year-old children about it's normal to change your gender, your sex? Help me understand this. How we understand how we're putting clubs in school that are pro-chemical castration of young children, mutilation of children? That's acceptable to us. We're getting rid of the math guidance, the math guidelines we've had for how long? We're upending the math. We're upending the social studies, the history. I know some of us, probably a lot of the political predators in the committee that want to impose their, I guess, ideology upon young children, maybe you don't even have children in the school, the school district, you want to kind of put what you want, what you see, what your political values are. These kids are young, they're impressionable. They deserve a lot better than what this committee has done to basically overturn what has worked in the past. And now we're seeing the results. Kids are more anxious, the grades are down, the rankings are way down, and we're talking about renewing contracts, running for higher office, renewing yourselves for more terms? Have any of you considered looking at the objective metrics here? And I'm not attacking you when I say this, I just, have you considered slowing things down? Considered what the parents have to say? Or is it all what a couple of very vocal, very, very ideologic people have to do here? And everyone just falls in line, and no one offers any alternatives or anything else is considered? I ask you to consider what you're doing, what you have done, and reel this back in because once this train takes off, once this train, excuse me, one second. Once this train takes off, it is a runaway train, and we've seen it time and time again in other places all across the country where there is no recovery for the students, and they grow up very, very troubled, disliking themselves, disliking their families, and it's not a good place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
My name is Alexandra Frank. I have two kids at Pine Hill and have no religious or political affiliations. Last fall, I detected the direction the district is headed and immediately met with Superintendent Beth McCoy to express my concerns about the promised radical transformation of DS based on the negative experience that my children and I had as a result of similar radical change in our old school. Since that time, I've shared our concerns and negative experience publicly so that this administration and school committee could take note and ensure that these harms are not repeated in DS. Further, I have participated in all channels made available to concerned and inquiring parents, not only because I feel that it is my duty as a parent to participate, but also to track the administration and school committee's response to parent and community concerns during this period of radical change. Based on my observations, I believe I have no choice but to leave DS, along with many other families and some school committee members, in order to enroll my children in a different school where I trust the leaders to ensure that their academic education is the top priority and that they will respect my parental rights. For the record, these observations include: A school committee that has green-lighted an extreme political and radically progressive direction with little to no questioning or dissent that is hiding behind mandates that are conveniently manipulated to suit its needs; preaches inclusivity while excluding individual viewpoints that do not toe the party line; is making radical transformations without supporting data from this or the scientific community; is lacking consistent transparency with the community; and is permitting psychological and curricular experimentation on our children without obtaining our consent; our new school understands that the highest priority should be given to academics and a classical education; respects and values parental boundaries and rights; understands that the relationship between parents and schools is extremely delicate and based on trust; and teaches children how to think critically in a safe environment; further, our new school teaches the unique value of each human being without reducing humankind based on immutable characteristics such as race, sex, and gender. Unlike DS, it promotes messages of unity, not division. We will continue to reside here, and I will continue to closely monitor the district's course as our tax dollars from the schools and my property value depends on its academic success. I will not hesitate to speak up as other courageous and experienced residents of this community have done this evening and in the past. In closing, some of you have stated that it is not easy to be a school committee member and that you commit a lot of volunteer time in the service of the community. This is true, and you deserve to be applauded for this service. However, I think the best way you could serve this community is by stepping down from your seats and allowing the community to fill the positions with new people who are committed to following the bylaws, are willing to ask difficult and unpopular questions, and are willing to engage and debate about the current stance of the administration. Thank you.
Other comments, either here or on the Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom?
Hi, Candace Sullivan, 100 Pine Street. So I actually came here, I wasn't actually planning on talking, but I'm listening to everybody's comments that I've heard here, and I have a degree in social work. I've worked in a hospital for 20 years. I work with children who have thought to suicide, who have participated in actions of self-harm, who have suicide ideation, and I'm going to applaud what you're doing because I work with kids that are in elementary school, that are in middle school, that are in high school, that have self-harmed themselves because of their gender identity and because they don't have sometimes a safe place to come out. They don't have a safe place to be, and sometimes that is what a school can be. And I applaud what you're doing because I think what you're doing is helping these children, not hindering them. Okay? I think that offering, when somebody goes to school and they realize that their environment understands who they are, that is exceptionally important because when a child doesn't feel safe and doesn't feel that their environment or even where they're going to school is safe, that can lead to self-harm. And children, especially children who are transgender, transgender children are 50% higher, have a 50% higher rate of suicide than any other, sorry, population. These are children's lives, okay? These are, these are, the DEI, all the work that's gone into what we're doing here and what you guys are doing, that's important. It saves lives, okay? It saves lives. And if you don't want something happen, if you disagree with something, pull your kid out. But most of us, the majority of us that live in this, live in Dover and live in Sherburne, we are applauding you, and I stand with you, and we stand with you. And, you know, if everybody else, you guys have the right to have your opinion, and that's right, you know, this is a public school, but I just want to let you know that I stand with you, and I thank you. And by the way, as a child who was, I had a child that was outplaced in the system, and I'm glad that you're trying to keep these kids in the system, and if they're testing scores or pulling the school down a little bit, you know what? I'd rather have these kids in the system than pulling them out so their scores don't count.
Thank you.
Because I'd rather have inclusion.
Thank you. Well, thank you. That concludes our community comments this evening. Next on our agenda is a human resource study update. Beth, would you like to make any introductory comments before we hear from Dr. Campbell?
Sure, thank you. So over the past several months, we have been looking at the organization of Central Office with a particular focus on human resource and whether or not we are able to meet the needs of our students, employers, and district. So we had one study done by the Collins Center, who came in a year ago, and we had further questions. So we reached out to Dr. Tom Campbell, who is a retired HR director from Needham for many years. Prior to that, he was a school principal and educator, and so asked Dr. Campbell to come in and spend a little bit more time with our Central Office team, with our building leaders who rely on Central Office to recruit and onboard and support employees once they're here. And he obviously has a wealth of information in human resource functionalities and the roles and responsibilities that would typically come with them. So Dr. Campbell has spent some time with us, he's reviewed the findings of the Collins Center, and has written a report which has been shared with all of you, and he's here tonight to share the highlights. So without further ado, Dr. Campbell.
Beth, thank you very much. I thank the school committee for having me tonight, I really appreciate it, and I will try to highlight some of the key pieces of some of the work that I did and then have to answer any questions that the committee may have. So as Beth suggested, I really came in as a follow-up to the work that was done by the Collins Center back in 2022. And just as a refresh, some of the three of the major areas that they identified as requiring attention, one was the lack of clarity of who was responsible for human resource functions and matters, that there was a concern around not having a primary contact person for human resource functions, and that many of the HR tasks were split among a wide variety of different personnel, primarily in the Central Office, and that there were some human resource functions that really had no one specific person that was responsible and in charge. As I did my work, which included really four discrete phases, I met with the Central Office staff and the school principals, I reviewed the data in the Collins Center report so that I could fully understand the work that took place. I had one-to-one meetings with the Central Office staff, and then also with principals, and then followed up with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. My work primarily focused on the recommendation that the Collins study had made, which was to look at a dedicated human resource individual or department and transfer some of the duties that were being performed by other members of the Central Office staff as well as the principals, and transfer those responsibilities to this dedicated individual, this new role. So that's what I really focused in on, and that's, yeah, pretty particularly intently. Through my work with the administration, I identified 99 discrete human resource functions in 12 different specific domains, and really focused at looking at who were the individuals that were performing those 99 discrete human resource functions, and were those appropriately placed with those individuals, and could the addition of a human resource person or office provide that support? I also, by the way, met with the co-presidents of the Dover Sherburne Education Association as well as the folks that I just mentioned. Some of my findings, the initial findings, were almost universally that I found a very strong desire among all of those that I surveyed and interviewed to have a dedicated human resource. Some of the themes that emerged in my work included a focused individual on the hiring process, looking at recruiting diverse candidates to work in the district, and also having a presence at the job fairs. We have many job fairs for educators in Massachusetts, and there's a strong desire to have Dover Sherburne represented at those job fairs. Looking at efficiencies with the hiring and the termination process. One of the major themes that I discovered through my work was the real desire and need to have a subject matter expert in human resources. Well, there are many talented people across the district in Dover Sherburne, and I was impressed with everybody that I met with. There was no one person that brought extensive subject matter expertise to the role of human resources, and that was a need that was identified very consistently. The need for expert and consistent administration of the Family Medical Leave Act, helping to manage the increasing number of personnel matters within the district, a individual really responsible for shepherding the development of good, solid job descriptions, improving the substitute pool and the availability of substitutes in the district, which every district has struggled with. Onboarding process, assisting in managing Title IX issues, centralizing human resource functions, and really taking those 99 tasks that were spread among many people and really bringing the majority of those into a dedicated individual. Oversight with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education licensing process and requirements, which are challenging and complex and difficult. Improved oversight of the lane change process, salary lane change, assisting with the whole retirement process and what that looks like with both the local retirement board as well as the mass teachers' retirement system. And improving the human resource webpage and really making that much more robust and user-friendly and having resources available for the staff. What I did was, through all of that work, I looked at all of those functions and really created an Excel chart that identified where all of those 99 responsibilities were residing, or not residing for that matter, and identifying if there were a dedicated human resource person in the district, what are some of those tasks that really should and could shift to that individual? And I presented that chart to the administrative team to really visualize what that would look like. And some of the tasks that I recommended remained with the individual that was performing that task, it made sense, but the vast majority of them I recommended would be moved over to a new position. In doing that, you're creating an office, you're creating the expertise, but you're also freeing up the individuals who are presently doing those tasks, who can now focus on other areas of responsibility as well for the district. My final recommendation was in support of what the Collins Center identified, which was to have an experienced, dedicated human resource position within the district. I think that while the district has done quite well around human resource-related issues, the level of risk that the district is also taking is, I think, quite prevalent in that you really would, should have an individual who is primarily responsible, has the experience to shepherd all of the regulations, the laws, both the federal and the state laws, as well as district policies. So that was, that's an overview summary of what I did over the last couple of months, and I'm happy to, if there are any questions that members of the school committee have, I'm happy to try to answer those, too.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Are there any questions from committee members? Okay, Andrew Johnson.
Hi, thank you for all your work. So when you were going through this, I know that you said there were many people who were doing like extra and above for the human resources work. Can you remember, can you tell us like how many people this was falling on, and if we centralized it, like how many people would be freed up, and how much of their time that it was taking, and, you know, what positions we were pulling them from to have them fill in these gaps?
Yeah, so I believe, I believe those, all of those human resource functions were spread across 11 different individuals. I didn't do a time study of the individual tasks, but it was, it's pretty substantial. Now, as I said, there are functions that are living with particular individuals that I recommended remain. So for example, Beth's administrative assistant prepares employment letters, for example. That's an appropriate responsibility for that individual to continue to do. So there were a number of tasks that are being performed by the different individuals that should remain with those folks. That makes a lot of sense, but there are much higher-level tasks that others have taken on that really should be identified in the office of human resource, someone that brings that level of expertise to the district. So I think you're going to find pretty substantial, not free time, but additional time where those individuals can really start to focus on other areas. So one example, you know, your assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction is really responsible for the sub- is really responsible for the substitutes. Having a human resource person take responsibility for recruiting, interviewing, and training substitutes frees Denny up to focus on some other aspect of his position that maybe he hasn't had time to do or has not had enough time to be able to focus on. So I think you'll find that you'll have substantial time available for those individuals if you do have an individual who's responsible primarily for HR.
Thank you. Maggie?
Go first.
Lynn Collins from Region.
Lynn Collins from the region, yeah. And I'm not sure, should I look there?
You can't see either way, so.
Right.
You can only hear you.
I'll look down. So in your report, you talk about a reporting relationship, that it should report to the superintendent. Can you talk a little bit more about the rationale for that recommendation?
Sure. I do think that in my experience and the positions that I have held, I have reported directly to the superintendent of school as the HR person. There are districts where the human resource personnel report to the business administrator. I think that, as I have shared in the report, HR and the business office are, you know, two departments that have to work hand in glove with one another. So your personnel costs are a huge portion of your budget. That HR person needs to work very collaborative with your business administrator because they can't work separately, it's far too important. But I also think that reporting to the superintendent of schools builds in also layers of accountability and security where you have two separate people that are responsible for specific areas of the budget and monitoring the budget. And it just provides, I think, another level of accountability. It certainly is a position in some districts that does report to the business administrator and in other districts that does report directly to the superintendent. And I think you probably find success in both of those districts. My recommendation is a direct report to the superintendent of schools, but it's certainly, you know, it's capable of reporting to the business administrator as well. The districts have it set up that way.
Thank you.
Tom, thank you so much for your reports. Maggie Sharon, Region, District. I am curious because one of the things that we sort of pride ourselves on in these districts is running a, you know, like a lean operation, that, you know, when we hear that people are doing things outside their scope, that's like a positive to us because we want all of our employees to kind of feel like it's an all-hands-on-deck situation. You alluded to regulations and things that have changed. Can you speak a little bit about how the HR role in schools has changed over, say, the last decade in ways that, you know, maybe we're not even aware in terms of what we need, why we would need a human resources professional versus a generalist?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think the, you know, what you're considering doing, many of the smaller districts have also considered doing and have actually done. I worked as the middle school principal in the Bedford Public Schools for a number of years. We didn't have an HR office. The assistant superintendent was the person that was primarily responsible. I think that's how it looked in a number or many different small districts. I think the work of human resources has become significantly more complicated with both federal and state law. The Family Medical Leave Act is not, certainly not a new law, it's been around for probably over 20 years, but it is an extremely complex, and it is a, it is a federal mandate where there are very specific steps that need to be followed in terms of processing people who have requested FMLA. In my experience, since COVID, the number of employees that I've worked with, with, you know, pretty significant mental health issues has really grown pretty significantly. We have, in the district that I presently work in, we have a number of staff who are out on leave due to mental health issues that they are really struggling with, and they need time to really focus on their own health and getting better and getting the support that they need. That has, in my experience, grown tremendously. I think the collective bargaining sort of atmosphere has changed over time as well in having an individual who is experienced and dedicated with collective bargaining, interpreting contract, understanding, you know, what is legally allowable in a collective bargaining agreement, what is already articulated in state and federal law. I think that is really important. State accountability, you know, EPMs is not a new function, we've had that for quite some time, but HR can certainly assist and help with that whole reporting process as well. And I also think that it's become a much more litigious world, and I think schools are different than other industries. And in my experience, we have seen more litigation, we've seen grievance increases, and I think it's really important that you have within your district an individual that really comes with that experience and with that expertise to be able to help make the decision. Really, you know, HR is, you know, a lot about making good decisions so that you remain out of trouble and out of litigation and really try to forecast those kinds of situations. That's what we bring to the table. That can be really helpful, is really being able to say, you know, look, if we're, you know, we're terminating this employee, we need to think sort of, well, what happens if this goes to litigation? What happens if a complaint is filed with the Mass Commission Against Discrimination or the EEOC at the federal level? How do we protect ourselves so that if that event does occur, we're positioning ourselves in a way of strength? I also think one of the messages that I heard loud and clear from the principals was having a resource that they knew they could pick up the phone and call and sort of get the right answer at the time that they needed it. That was pretty consistent among the principals, that all the principals that I spoke with, having that resource available was something that they were really articulating a need for.
Thank you, this was really helpful, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments from committee members?
Kate Potter.
So what would our next steps be?
So the question is, what are our next steps? So I can speak to that?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So we, with Dr. Campbell's help, have drafted a job description, and we are ready to post for the Director of Human Resources, and thanks to your support, that is in the budget for next year. In the meantime, we have spoken with the towns of Dover and Sherburn. As you know, that they have to function for our employees in Pine Hill and Chickering as we function as a region for the employees at the middle and high school. So we are collaborating with them to determine how this person could be shared and what that looks like. In fact, we have a meeting later this week, thanks to Dawn's organization and orchestration of getting everybody at the table. So we're working with them to kind of finalize what the job description would look like, and that'll go up, and we'll go from there. Hopefully, we'll have someone onboard this summer. We already have a wonderful list of things for them to start right off the bat before we start the school year in September. And to Dr. Campbell's point, you know, there's many things that are going to be taken off of many people's plates that will free them up to do the work that they're here to do. So, you know, we mentioned that Denny hires and oversees the substitutes, he also oversees licensure, and he also oversees the legal training in the beginning of the school year as well as the mentoring program. So if those things come off his plate, he will be able to spend much more time in classrooms observing teaching and learning and coaching teachers. That's just one example of the many responsibilities that all of us share.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
The other piece I think is worth noting too is, as Tom mentioned, having that subject matter expertise and principals being able to pick up the phone at any moment, and we have relied heavily on our attorneys for questions that we don't know how to answer. Lately, I've been relying on Tom because now I know how to reach him and say, Tom, what do we do here? I know he's considering applying for the job. But it would be nice to have someone where we don't have to wait for a phone call back from a busy attorney to be able to then answer the principals and get those two middle people out of it and just have the principals go directly to someone.
All right, since I asked about reporting, where, what's our structure? Who is it gonna report to?
Well, we are still considering Dr. Campbell's recommendation, but at this point, it would likely be me.
Nothing against anyone, just curious.
Yeah, and we're a close, tight-knit, you know, team in Central Office, and we all work together and rely on each other for a number of things. So, you know, officially, they'll report to me, but they'll be, you know, hand in arm with Dawn on many things and Denny on others, so.
Have you, have you found a tent to put them in?
Touchy subjects, we're working on that.
Very well, but that's not for now. That's house talk, Dr. Campbell, you don't need to.
Dr. Campbell, if you come, we'll find you the best office.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Dr. Campbell, for your guidance, and thank you for these very helpful recommendations, and I wish the administration the best of luck in conducting this search and finding that subject matter expertise to bring in-house. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and I want to just thank Dover Sherburn for having me be part of your community for a short period of time. From my perspective, you already know this, but what a special place with some really talented and really committed people. You're really lucky to have the administrators that you do have onboard. It is a wonderful place, so thank you for the opportunity to be a small part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you didn't get to see your former colleagues, but Maggie Sharon and Mark Healy are here at the table, so greetings from.
Hi, Heidi, hi, Mark, thanks for hearing you.
We miss you, we too wish that we could keep calling you. Always good advice.
Happy to help.
All right, well, thank you for your time this evening, enjoy the rest of it, we'll talk to you soon. Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, that brings us to an update on school security. Okay, thank you. So as you noted, the security of our students and our staff are top priority. Nothing can happen unless we make sure that people are physically safe, psychologically safe in order for learning to happen. So, but those of you who are parents, and I even started with those who are former parents, next Monday on May 8th, we have Jason Brennan from Synergy Solutions coming to talk about the training that we do with educators and the training that we're going to be doing with middle and high school students, should there ever be an armed intruder in any of our buildings. We realize it is a difficult topic, especially to talk about with young adolescents. So we have been certainly, he and ourselves, doing some research that we'll share with parents that evening about kind of what they're seeing so far in terms of, you know, the benefits of this versus how it might be affecting kids otherwise. But unfortunately, it's a reality now that, you know, we could be, our children could be with us, or they could be without us, or we're out, you know, in a school, in a bank, in a church, knowing what to do. In the case of an armed intruder, has become literally a life skill and something that we want to make sure that we are prepared for should, God forbid, it ever happen on one of our campuses. That said, we first met Jason back in 2018 when we partnered him to do the security audit across all three campuses, all four buildings. And since then, we have done significant work in terms of making upgrades and making sure that our buildings are as safe as they can be for our students and our staff, and there are certainly things that are obvious that you can see, and there's others that we, you know, will not share because they're there for security purposes and wouldn't like the world to know. That said, because of your ongoing commitment and dedication to this topic and the money that you have helped invest into security of the last few years, we wanted to make sure that you had kind of a reminder and an update as to where we are. So Dawn put together a memo for you in your packet and was going to kind of speak to some of the work that we've done over the last few years.
Yeah, it's actually remarkable when you sit back and you think about all we have done since 2018, and we had already done some great stuff, I think, prior to 2018, but the port that Synergy did for us gave us new sort of paths and new techniques to employ. And if you recall, this campus used to be much more of an open campus, right? That became something that wasn't really feasible anymore. So a lot of the significant financial sort of enhancements have been here at the region. As you know, we're all on the FOB system now with, already with the middle school and high school. This past summer, we looked like with Dawn, the FOB system, and we also upgraded our two elementaries, so we're now all on the same system. So any staff that are actually traveling between campuses, actually their FOB works at all buildings. So it's great to have us all on the same system. And we've also then here picked up, and as you, as you know, we brought to you a couple of months ago, exterior cameras. So our elementary schools already had exterior cameras, we are now, this actually might see some wires and a few cameras up right now because they're in the process of being installed. And again, that's for security and for a lot of reasons why it makes sense to do that. And there again are, you know, we've done a lot of training with the staff, and there are now sort of emergency-related supplies that each classroom now is equipped with, we know how to lock, we have special locking mechanisms, so that continues to be something that we're always looking at. But I thought it was worthwhile to show the investment that the three districts have made in the safe and security of our staff and our students. As Beth mentioned, the training, we've been doing this now for several years. What's great about it is that it contains both here you're in school and you're not in school. So I think that levity actually is very helpful for our staff and hopefully will be for our students when that comes down to it, that it's not training that you have to know because you have to go to school and be in school. It, you know, it will provide you tools for wherever you are. And I think that mindset makes it a little less stressful when that training is being delivered. And as you know, now we're starting to do more sort of lockdown drills, you know, at different levels at the different elementaries, but that's actually just practice so that this becomes, it's sad to say, but just part of, like you say, the four Ls, and we all know the four Ls now. So like I said, serves you purposes here and it serves you purpose if you're in the supermarket. And then we have, since COVID, reinstated, you know, our emergency preparedness team, we're meeting at least twice, we actually just had a meeting recently. And so it's great to collaborate with both our local police departments. Their investment in what we're doing is phenomenal, they take part in all the drills that we do, they serve as a sort of a guide and an expert to my director facilities, we're looking at some things at Pine Hill right now. So it's great to have them such great partners with us. And just know that this is a constant for us, and we're continuing to evolve what we need to do. I think we're gonna get to the part where we've had so much training with Synergy 911 that we can be trained trainers as we go through, so I hope our staff will be more comfortable, parents now will become more informed as to what we do. As you know, Jason had already spoken at one of the school committee meetings that we actually have shared with parents. So I think, because everything's going on, the fact that we have the parental meeting coming up, it made sense to just sort of bring it all together, so you're well informed as to where we are on this topic.
Thank you, Dawn. Thank you. Are there any questions relative to security?
Just a quick comment, if I may. When you sent your email, just kind of, I think, I know we've all been touched and been impacted by the recent events everywhere sadly, but it is in some way so reassuring to know that even outside of school, my child will be able to utilize that critical thinking skill, be it in a mall, be it, as you said, in church, or any place of worship. It's, as you said, sad, but I appreciate that this is going on because I want all of our children to be able to, in that, hopefully that moment never comes, but in that horrible moment, to say, this is what I do, I've done this before, I'm gonna be okay, and maybe even help some people around them.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
As we continue to work with Synergy, are there other suggestions or things that they're recommending that we do, like beyond kind of where we are now? Are we kind of on a longer-term trajectory, or do we feel like we're in a pretty good spot right now in terms of, you know, the word was hardening of the campus?
I think we've pretty much implemented everything they've recommended that makes sense for us on our campus. I think that what we've been doing now is every time they come, we drill down to a different sort of level of, like last time they came and they worked with our food service staff, getting them just more acclimated within their area, right? Because they're in the kitchen and we have the cafeteria. We're gonna be doing the same with some of our after-school programs in our next round. So probably just drilling down to make sure that we've covered sort of every group here to the extent that helps them when they're here, but also when they go someplace else. But there's some, there's some programming in some locations that might need a little bit more of a different expertise than just generality, so our food service staff are very. So, our food service staff are very thrilled and feel much safer now, but they've had that one-on-one training with Synergy for just their group and their area.
Thank you.
And I think every time what we do is drill too, you know, at the building level, they have an emergency team. They bring together educators and administrative assistants and custodians to debrief kind of what went well and what are some of the gaps. And then we have an ongoing document of documenting what those gaps are and making sure that they're addressed by technology or addressed by, you know, facilities to make sure that the next time we have the drill, it goes a little smoother. So, I think that's helpful too, to just identify for ourselves what needs to be done.
Dawn, you prompted me to think of this question. What happens with substitutes when they come into the district? Do they receive training? Because they could be in multiple classrooms, multiple buildings.
So, we've been inviting them to sort of our trainings. Our coaches have been invited to our trainings. Actually, that's another arena that we have asked Jason to sort of look at specifically is our after-school sports. And what are, what do you do when you're outside on the fields? Or that's our, another level that we are looking into. So, we've been really inclusive whenever we have these trainings to invite anyone who has ever in our building and are working capacity to come participate.
That's great. Thank you. Colleen?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, if there's anybody trained in the buildings for, trained in psychological first aid. God forbid, something did happen. Is that part of the training that they do?
Not directly with Synergy, but I think that's where our guidance departments go to sometimes training for that purpose and build on that with their sort of jobalikes and their specific training versus Synergy.
And there's local agencies that we partner with, you know, when we've had loss of students and staff in the, in the district, they're willing to come in with, with their teams and kind of specialized trauma situations that we rely really on experts beyond what, you know, our wonderful guidance counselors and adjustment counselors would be prepared to do.
Cool.
I'm assuming this is not probably related to exactly security and what they're doing, but it's kind of related because I know some schools, they do a training called Stop the Breeding. So, when, God forbid, something happens, even students are ready to do something for injuries that can be, can basically, they can do stuff to save themselves or their friends or teachers. I wonder if they have any program that they can bring in for teaching or other.
Yeah, we can certainly bring that back to the emergency preparedness team. I know another thing that came up lately is at the high school level during the elective process for the PE program, students can take first aid. And, you know, in the 21st century, should, you know, first aid and CPR be like this, a life skill and requirement of the work that all students have access to. So, we can certainly add that to it as well.
There's a program that I know some surgeons started right after one of the school shootings. And they even teach very young kids and they have kits that you can provide, they provide and you can keep them in the classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I mean, it's, it's a sobering topic, a sobering reality and every parent and teacher's nightmare scenario. So, I thank you for this update, this information, for inviting parents and caregivers to learn more about the comprehensive approaches that are being taken. And hopefully, it's a level of preparedness that we never need to employ. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Next up is the report from our superintendent of her entry findings.
Thank you. I could just do a quick commercial about a few updates before we dive into the entry findings. Just since we last met and that kind of happened over vacation and recently. The first is, for those of you who haven't noticed, our bookshelves here in the library have caution tape around them. The library looks 3,000 times better than it did over vacation. So, for those of you who don't know, there was a leak from one of the heaters upstairs that came through the classroom floor, through the ceiling into the library. And we had a swimming pool here this Sunday, the first Sunday of vacation. And thanks to the, the safety training of our police officers who happened to be walking the building, training a new officer in the layout, they came across the flood and caught it far earlier than any of us would have known about. So, thank goodness for that. But Dawn was here until 3:00 AM one night with our custodians. Ceiling tiles have been replaced, but underneath those ceiling tiles, it'll be all coming down. It's ductwork that needs to be replaced. There's, there's walls in the foyer that need to come out and be replaced. Many of our books, unfortunately, were lost. So.
Might be a new carpet that's come along. So, we are, we put everything back together and we're going to get through to the end of the school year, but we already have a re- restorative construction company that's come through and we'll put together a report that we'll take care of.
Hopefully, there's some insurance.
Oh, yeah, no, we're completely under pressure.
The silver lining, if there is any, is that perhaps we'll have a more collaborative Makerspace-type library moving forward. It's just pushing that to the forefront as opposed to waiting to design it. Wendy's been in all week designing it now. So, but thank you to Dawn. She certainly, I mean.
And I'll, I'll keep the regional school committee updated, but we're, you know, we're looking at a significant claim based on what happened. But we are fortunate to the police that did just happen to be coming by on a visit. And we also were very fortunate that the fire department was in the process of doing some training and had a truck full of people because they're the ones who came and found the source of the water ASAP and were able to shut them out. All within like 10 minutes. We just don't know how long that had been happening.
So, the quick update there. And then lastly, Dawn and I attended the Sherburne Town meeting last night and the Sherburne has approved their portion of the Sherburne and the regional budget. So, we are halfway there and thank you for all of your support and planning throughout the process. We can open half of our school so far and hopefully the other half after next week.
After Monday night.
So, that's that. All right. So, moving on to the entry process, I brought, don't call the administrator, call her copies. For everybody to share. Every time I look at it, I do a little bit of wordsmithing, so I apologize. It's become a project. And there's a PowerPoint too, for anybody who wants to follow along. So, as you know, I'm in my first year as superintendent and I'm part of the new superintendent induction program that is offered by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. So, I will be part of this program for three years. There are 24 new superintendents in Massachusetts this year, 12 of whom were already in the district like myself and 12 of whom were new to their districts. And there's 81, I think, of us total that are in our first three years as part of this program. Every superintendent throughout the last 13 years who have gone through this program have done what's called an entry plan and it's quite popular in other businesses and areas as well. It's an opportunity for a leader, whether it's a superintendent from within, a superintendent from without, the superintendent or the leader of a business to come in and just do a lot of listening, interviewing, looking at documents, looking at information, observing the spaces, observing the people, and then coming to some findings of things that we're doing really well and what are some patterns of things that we perhaps need to work on moving forward. So, I had the benefit of working with Dr. Keo on this process six years ago now, which resulted in the strategic plan that has been guiding our work minus the pandemic that wasn't in the strategic plan for the last several years. And I have had the opportunity now for Denny to do a second process for me and his first entry process together. And we're here tonight to share our findings. So, again, I want to thank Denny. We did some of these pieces together in terms of meeting with students. That was the most fun part. We did some of our surveys together, but he also did a deep dive with the teachers and got a lot more information around teaching and learning as I kind of looked to the larger community and stakeholder groups. So, there's three processes to this, three steps to this process. The first was listening and learning, and that's what we engaged in from September to February. That was when Denny and I were holding interviews with all of you, with our school leaders, with town officials, emergency teams, union leaders. We ran focus groups for parents, for students, for community members. We had seven focus groups total for parents. I have it here in my data. Nine focus groups for students, six for, and six for educators throughout the months of November, December, January. And then we sent out surveys to our middle school students, our high school students and all of our families. And the response got 355 back. We tried to differentiate our questions to get as much information as possible. And that led us then to last month and this month, March and April, stage two, which was taking all of the information. I had four notebooks of chicken scratch that probably I was the only one that could read. Denny had several notebooks from all of his meetings and interviews and we had 355 survey responses to go through. And so, we've been spending lots of quality time together, looking at that, trying to find out what are the patterns. So, tonight we are here to show you the patterns and some questions that might got to work moving forward as we start to think about what do we do about these patterns and how do we approach them? So, tonight we'll share the findings and then after tonight, any constructive feedback or suggestions from you all, as well as any constructive feedback and suggestions we'll be getting from our community as we share out our findings over the next few weeks. We'll then roll into the work of the leadership team, the district-wide leadership team of 17, to look at this and say, you know, what are the root causes and the reasons behind some of these things? And then how do we address them as educational experts moving forward? And that will result with a district strategy, different than a strategic plan, but similar to a strategic plan that we will present to you at our first meeting, whether that's August or September. Then following that will be a detailed action plan of what are the actual steps we're going to take? Who's responsible? What are the resources we need? And what's the timeline for getting that done? Today's just step one of patterns. So, here we go. Again, I just spoke through all of this. These are the interviews, the focus groups, the surveys that we, that we conducted. On the next slide are all of the key documents that we reviewed relative to curriculum and instruction, relevant to management and operations, community engagement and professional culture. So, some of these things I'd already known from my former role, some of these things I had written from my former role, others Denny and I took a deep dive into with, with kind of a new perspective. What we did with this data, similar to the work that you do in your fields, is the triangulation. And this term I learned in my new superintendent program, and I really love it. It's looking at data that you can see, that you can hear, and that you can count. And so, what did you observe and notice? What did you hear from talking to people and reading their survey results? And then what can you count in terms of your qualitative data or any patterns that you had, excuse me, in your quantitative data or patterns in your qualitative data? And if something speaks to all three of those categories, then it's an emerging pattern. So, that's the work that Denny and I have been doing post-recently. So, strengths. There are many, many, many layers to each of these, but I think the Bruins are starting soon, so I will be brief. Number one strength said by absolutely everybody who was interviewed, surveyed, whether they were 13 or whether they were 83, is that Dover Sherburne is founded in academic excellence and we want to continue that in every way, shape or form. Families move here for the schools and all of our standardized test data, what our alumni come back and tell us is that over many different measures, we prepare students very well for the academics of post-secondary life college. The community obviously is a huge factor and strength for us. The community feel the support that we provide for each other, the focus on education as being the primary agenda item for our communities. I heard that last night, looking at the budget, the majority of the Dover and Sherburne budgets go towards education. The rural feel, the appreciation for nature, all of that is, is, is well appreciated. Our educators and staff, again, if you ask parents, if you ask students, what do you value? They value the adults that work here. And I can certainly attest to that as well as a parent and as an educator that we are fortunate to have very skilled experts in their grade levels and their content areas every day, working with kids and building relationships with them. Students, perhaps this should have been the top of the list. That's why we're here, but they're certainly a strength wherever they fall in the list. And they are the ones that bring us joy to the work that we do every day. And we know that they're obviously parents' biggest investment and biggest prize. And then the focus on the whole child was the pattern that came up again and again. As you know, our work with challenge success over the last now almost 10 years has made us realize again, in addition to the pandemic, how important social, emotional wellness is and psychological safety. Because if you don't have those two pieces, students aren't going to be able to learn at high levels. So, there's lots of appreciation for the ways that we've looked at homework, assessments, schedules, kind of thinking about the whole child and their ability to not only attend to school and academics, but also have some time for play, peers and family. There's some quotes there. You'll all have access to the slides and the reports, but speak to all of those topics. So, five kind of pattern areas. The first is excellence in innovation and learning. So, something to the effect of, if you put all this information together, the community at large, including students, administrators, educators and families are looking to maintain academic excellence and rigor while adapting practices to prepare students for success in a rapidly changing world. We can't imagine what the world is going to look like when the kindergartners are 35. We realize that the educational model that we had when we were in school, or at least myself, of sitting in rows and providing information back at a very low level on Bloom's taxonomy is not the education that we want for our kids. So, how are we going to continue on the work that we already started as a district and get farther towards a 21st century education? So, strengths that are already in our kind of wheelhouse here that can push us forward. Lots of regard for the portrait of a graduate that outlines the skills our students need. In addition to the content and the knowledge, they need to be critical thinkers, problem solvers, creative communicators, all of those things. Lots of applause for the enrichment opportunities, specifically for our CSAP TOs positive that support all of those enrichments that take the curriculum to the next level with activities or presentations. And the resources, especially through DSCF, that they've been able to provide our educators, things that aren't in the operating budget, but we, but we say we want to try this new technology tool or this new, this new lab and we need to buy these materials. DSCF has allowed us to get those things, those cutting-edge things, try them and then decide if we do want to roll them at a larger scale into the operating budget. High regard for the elementary coaches. They feel like educators at the elementary level and parents feel like we've been able to, to move teachers forward in terms of the workshop practices and small group instruction because we've had that extra layer of professional development at the elementary level. The high school courses, including forensic science, AP computer science and financial literacy have been huge hits, mentioned by students and, and parents in terms of thinking about interdisciplinary topics and things that are super relevant to the future moving forward. New instructional strategies that we're seeing in our classrooms around project-based learning and inquiry, experiential learning are certainly a step in the right direction. And the flexible seating projects that we've done, thanks again to DSCF in terms of moving away from desks, having collaborative spaces, giving students choice as to whether they want to sit in a standard desk or they want a bouncy ball to get rid of some of their wiggles, or what works best in math for them might be different than reading time. But certainly that has helped kind of push us forward in terms of thinking about the whole child. Areas for growth. We have lots of professional development that's happened. We have lots of amazing instructional practices happening pre-K through 12. But if we could kind of streamline into what we expect to happen in all classrooms through a shared vision, then we can all kind of work and focus our efforts in that direction. So, there is talk about developing the portrait of an educator and what should teaching and learning look like? And how does an educator function, just like the portrait of a graduate does for our students? Speaking of the portrait of a graduate, we have the visual. We understand the competencies. But how do we practice those competencies in the classroom? And then how do we measure student growth and critical thinking and problem solving and empathy? And then how do we communicate that information back to our parents and caregivers? Speaking of communicating feedback, grading practices. Again, these are just questions. All different constituent groups have talked about how our, some of our grading practices reinforce getting the task done. Tell me what I need to do. Let me get it done. I give it to you. You give me the egg. We're on the next thing. And then you go to take the final exam or you are asked for the same final exam questions a year later and the information isn't there. So, how do we promote deep learning in a way that the students aren't just aiming to get the letter grade and move on? Because deep learning and understanding and curiosity is really what we want to be aiming for. So, thinking about that. Our technology plan, due to nobody's fault except the pandemic, is a little bit outdated. But the silver lining of the pandemic is there are certainly things that we can take out and add and change based on what we've learned is good for teaching and is not good for teaching with technology. School schedules. Yes, we have precess. Yes, we have break time. Yes, we have flex block. But in terms of the instructional blocks, are they ideal for things like readers and writers workshop or things like interdisciplinary learning? So, the middle school is already looking at that and I know it's an ongoing conversation at the elementary level as well. And then learning spaces, there's still more work to be done. We talked about what the library maybe could look like moving forward once we get past this disaster. So, some guiding questions on the bottom as we move forward with this work, just to kind of get us thinking about this as we decide how we want to move forward. Second bucket, challenging and supporting all students to enhance programming to ensure all students are able to achieve their full potential within a supportive learning environment. So, strengths include our content experts who are our teachers, the relationships they build with kids, looking at the whole child I already mentioned, having tiered supports for kids. So, somebody who needs a quick fix and doesn't necessarily need a full, full-long educational plan. and doesn't necessarily need a full-on educational plan that lasts a year, or two, or three, how do we provide little fixes and big fixes at the same time? We have hired an amazing educator at the secondary level into our English language learner program, which has really expanded not only our ability to work with our L students, but for that person to coach and work with our teachers so that they're implementing the SEI endorsement practices that they should be in their general classroom with students who are learning English. The equity audit process was an opportunity for us to look at perhaps some subgroups of students who aren't achieving at the levels that they could, or don't have a sense of belonging, and really engage, start to engage, start the conversation with the community about what is our vision for that moving forward. The curriculum review is a step to make sure that we are providing opportunities for students to be engaged in the curriculum, find interest in the curriculum, be supported, challenged, inspired, all of those things. And technology advancements out of the pandemic. We now have one-to-one devices, whether that's an iPad, whether that's a Chromebook that are available to us, which we did not have before. Areas for growth, making sure that students within a grade level are having similar experiences despite the teacher that they have, but also that our grades build on each other like Legos, and that there's a progression of both content and skills as we go from K to twelve. Access to advanced courses, are all of our students having access to AP Biology, to honors math if they want to, and is the only on-ramp in sixth grade when they're leveled for the first time, or there are other opportunities for them to catch up and jump on the train later. Meeting the range of needs. Fascinating, reading the surveys, you know, you'll have some parents say, we're doing too much around social, emotional wellness, and others saying we're not doing enough. In terms of meeting the range of needs, there was a subgroup of parents who said, we're not doing enough to support the kids who are behind. Another group said, we're not doing enough to challenge those who are ahead, and another group that says, we're not, we're ignoring those in the middle. So, and if you count the numbers, it's very similar. So we have obviously work to do around differentiation, and how do we meet all of those needs at the same time? A sense of belonging, again, a strength and an area for growth. Many said that our teachers are fabulous in building relationships with students, between students, but again, making sure that all students feel like they have a friend and an adult in the building that they can go to. Tools to address incidents, whether it's bullying, came up a number of times, or bias-based incidents, what do you do in the moment? How do we prevent them? How do we address it? How do we report them? So area of growth moving forward. Restorative practices, we've talked about, but certainly there is a desire for more education around what that looks like, what are the consequences, how do we ensure safety moving forward? So as we look deeper into restorative practices, we'll certainly want to have conversations with our students, training with our educators, and forums for our parents to learn more as well. And then another one that came up actually a few times was a perceived assumption by some parents and community members that everybody in Dover and Sherburne, you know, is affluent, and therefore, everybody can hire a tutor, everyone has access to after-school care, and that that just should be given. And it was a soft reminder, if that's not always the case, and we shouldn't take that for granted, and we need to think about kind of the holistic needs of students and their families. Bucket three, professional growth and learning for our educators, expand opportunities for professional growth and collaboration among educators in support of the district's vision for teaching and learning. So if you have all of these amazing expectations and hopes of what teaching in the 21st century should look like, we have to help our educators continue to grow and learn those practices. So strengths already on our side. We have highly skilled educators who are willing to learn with rich professional development opportunities at their fingertips. We just want to kind of narrow the focus, and that they're already super collaborative. They share, they want to spend time together, they like each other, that's a good thing. So how can we find more opportunities for them to do that? Areas for growth. There is one Denny, and as you know, he is a part HR director. We have coaches at the elementary level. We have curriculum leaders at the middle school who teach full-time and get a stipend to run department meetings. We have department heads at the high school who teach four out of five periods, and have one period to do observations of their peers and run meetings. With Denny having thirteen grades in eight subject areas, there is not a lot of glue and threading that can happen to create this curriculum of content and skills all the way through. So there is a desire to look at the structure and figure out if there is a new and better and different way of providing support of, this is what science looks like K to twelve, and this is what, you know, project-based learning looks like in a middle school, because I don't think that we're going to see movement in the first two buckets unless there is more manpower, or human power, and women power, and all of the above on the ground. To identify any gaps in PD that we're missing, increase collaboration time to share. The evaluation process, many of you sat on the MLU a couple of years ago during the pandemic. We bonded over updating the evaluation process. It is taking leaps forward, but there's still work to be done because we all get busy. Teachers get busy. They have a lot on their plates. We have a lot on their plates. Floods happen, emergencies happen. So how can we build in time to really have those meaningful, reflective conversations with teachers that are going to help them improve their practice? And then human resource position, Tom already covered that for us. Bucket number four, family and community engagement, certainly a pattern and something we want to focus on. Engage families and community members in the strategic pursuit of a shared vision and mission. So some of the strengths, and maybe this is a fault, is we have lots of mechanisms for communication from emails, newsletters, tweets, social media posts. Again, strength and weakness. There is lots of regard for the community forums that we've had and request for more as we move forward, whether it's around curriculum, whether it's around restorative practices. So something to keep in mind. And then great aspiration and hopes for this new website that's coming this summer, which you have had a preview of. Areas for growth. So the equity audit happened two years ago, right? Last year was the audit process, the data collecting process, and then it was presented in September. So in an attempt to share that information and be fully transparent about what it says and what it could look like in the schools, I have focused a lot of my communication around it, both to inform and be transparent to those who are in support and those who have questions. In doing that, my communication has not focused on the reading that's happening every day, and the math that's happening every day, and the social studies that's happening every day. The core academics are happening all the time, every day, and our teachers, if you, I could only give them one adjective, and they're worthy of a thousand, they are content experts. The content is rich. We just, because we've been focused on trying to be transparent around DEI work and answer so many questions, hasn't been on the forefront. So we need to be better about doing that. Access to curriculum information. Our educators have curriculum documents about what they teach, the books that they read, the assessments that they do. We want to update those and then have a community-facing version of those so that parents are fully aware of all of the units, all of the objectives, all of the assessments that their students will undergo, and Denny's working with the leaders on that when he's not doing HR. The school calendar, we've already talked about having a task force to look at the holidays and observances that we celebrate, whether it's three days off, or the way that we, you know, provide flexibility around homework and assessments, so that will be moving forward. Making sure that all families have access to and knowledge of events that are happening, both at the schools and within the community. We've done a lot of work around making sure that our information is translatable to our families, but that's only one step. We want to make sure that there are liaisons between community groups and and folks to make sure that everybody is aware and feels welcome and encouraged to come and celebrate and engage with us in our day-to-day activities. And then communicating our goals moving forward. You know, as we start to look at, you know, grading practices, as we start to look at restorative practices, as we start to look at our numbers of students accessing higher-level courses, we want to make sure that we are open, that we're communicating with our with our constituent groups, that we're asking for feedback, and that we're showing progress on the goals that we're trying to make, or pivots that we need to make. That said, I would just like to remind people that all of the questions that have been asked in the forums, where they either answered during the forums, or are now in the nearly sixty-page FAQ document. So there has not been a question that has been asked that hasn't been answered. And including one about the math curriculum, which we've had for twenty years. And it also addresses the difference between standards and frameworks. So that's all in there, under communication. Safe and sustainable spaces. This is the last bucket. Evaluate and update facilities to ensure safety, which we already talked about this evening. Sufficient, we're running out of space because we're expanding the number of programs we have and the number of people. And sustainable spaces, as we want to be respectful of our environment amidst the changing education and environmental landscape. So strengths. These buildings, all of them, are well-maintained. Our custodians are awesome. Our director of business is awesome. Our director of facilities is awesome. They're well-maintained. No doubt about it. They're clean, they're functioning. We've done several safety updates. We talked about those. We've had several advancements in sustainability, you know, looking at ways that we can become more green in these schools. And you've heard about through that, through the budget process and the products that we've been choosing lately, and our ways to get energy. Areas for growth. We're learning every day, unfortunately, through more incidents, ways that we can improve and lessons learned. So we want to make sure that we continue to keep up with those. The availability of space, right now, we have an audit going on at the region, looking at the middle school and the high school, to see if we can be more creative, or we have, or if we have to be more aggressive than creative, in terms of making sure we have enough space for our students and staff. Pine Hill is beloved. It's an amazing place with the people and the love in it. But the building is old. It's clean, it's well-maintained, but there's going to come a point where the towns are going to have to say, it's time to think about Plan B. And as we know, there's a long planning process that comes with that, years and years and years, and lots and lots of money. You know, we know what happened with the library. But that said, in the short term, we need to think about cooling strategies, because that is the only building in our school system, and the only building that is town-owned in Sherburne that does not have air conditioning. And luckily, we have a handful of days every year where it gets super hot, but when those days come back-to-back-to-back, it gets very humid in there. So if it's not going to be air conditioning as a solution, because that doesn't make sense for a long-term investment, then we need to come up with some sort of short-term strategies to make sure that the students and staff are comfortable in that building. The athletic fields, there is work to be done on our tennis courts, our turf fields, our bleachers, our press box. If anybody can find a pile of money, that would be awesome. Otherwise, I think we need to think about how we can partner with different groups and grants to get those things moving along. And anything we can do to be greener faster, our students are demanding it yesterday, as well as some of our educators and community members. So keep that work going. So in terms of next steps, I will be sharing the ten-page report that you all have, as well as the slides, by email and on the new website, to all DS community members, with an opportunity to provide some constructive feedback. Once we get that, we'll be working with the leadership team, again, to say, you know, how do we start to address these patterns? And then come August, September, at our first meeting, we'll have a strategy to say, here are our priorities, here are some big-ticket items that we're going to be focused on to get those priorities done. And then, under this priority, these people are responsible for doing these things along this timeline, and this is how we'll show you progress. And then you'll get an action plan with all of that mapped out next fall. So, next slide. Just a big thank you to, again, Denny, for helping me collect all this data and synthesize the data. Dawn, I can't tell you how many times, has proofread and helped make sure that the document is ready to go. To all of you who've contributed to all of our parents, community members who completed the survey, to all of the kids who gave some amazing feedback, some of which makes me continue to laugh when I look at, but so insightful. So thank you for getting this. I'm hopeful that you find this representative of our community and our vision. I'm open to things that you want to put star next to, or any constructive feedback or suggestions you have of things that are missing, or things that don't hit the mark. Yes, sorry, this is your job.
As usual, I am in awe of the work that you've done on this project. It is insightful. It is deep and broad. Thank you. I'm, again, in awe, because it's incredible. I have one question of something I don't, I'm sure you covered it, but I don't get it, which is, what's the difference between what we will get in August and September and what we had for the last five years?
Not much.
Okay. It mean, they have different names?
They have different names. So a strategic plan, which is what we've been calling the document that we've been living under for the last six years, I guess, when you boil down to, and this is what I learned through the NSIP program, is a strategic plan is often done by a third party, and it often covers a wide range of topics, anything that happens in a district. So there might be a whole bucket that talks about grants, or there might be a whole bucket that talks about, you know, just just facilities. Whereas this is done by the leader of the district within the district, and it's focused primarily on how do we move teaching and learning forward, and letting those other things go that will happen, but not having them be in the center of our target moving forward.
Excellent.
I probably missed a few examples, just.
No, that explains it.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Colleen, I would just like to say thank you for listening so thoroughly, you know, to just to the students, to the staff, to the the community members. I think it's really important to feel heard, and you guys do a fabulous job of making people feel heard. And not just heard, but listened to, and then given, you know, we're all part of this, we were all part of this. Being a part of the direction where we're going feels really, really good. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Are these themes ranked or are they summation?
They're summation. Yeah. And we talked about this as an executive team, too, is some of them are continuations of the strategic plan that already exists, which is a good thing. That means that we're not just all of a sudden pivoting, that we're continuing to go down the roads, you know, that we had started six years ago and even prior to that. And I think one of the things worth noting is that one of the hesitations that people that are superintendents now, but were formerly in their districts, and I heard this in my program from the other eleven of us, is, should this take us only six months to do, because we already know the district? Should we even do this process? Because can't I just take the strategic plan that we have and cross things out and add some things that I know kind of logically make sense to go next? But the answer is no. Say, stop, go out and talk to everybody, listen to everyone, figure out what should continue and what needs to shift, and then bring it back to the table. So it was kind of like a stop, timeout, is this working, and what needs to come next opportunity?
Last thing I'll say, too, just to make you sense, is I just want to give credit to my boss for working really tirelessly on this, and it's really a labor of love, and I feel lucky to have been part of it, but really put a lot of thought into this. So I think it's great.
Thank you.
All right, others?
I guess my feedback is, you know, first, I feel what other folks feel, but thank you. I think this is thorough. I think it's detailed. I think it captures some of the nuance of competing and also, you know, competing priorities, but also, you know, the whole idea of a comprehensive public school system, and our charge, which is to educate and provide opportunities for excellence for every child who enters our door, is a really big charge. And choosing where to put our emphasis is is hard and is a challenge. And, you know, in listening to some of the comments from the communities tonight, you would get the impression that, like, the schools sort of become a dump, like, to be honest. And that's not fair, because, you know, I've had the privilege in the last three school years of attending graduation, and of seeing our graduates over the last four years, at least, although I've been doing this work for seven years, and after next year, I will retire, as was requested tonight. But, but the students who have been leaving our schools, the seniors that we have this year, to a person, each of them is going off to a remarkable outcome. And I continue to hear, and because my son graduated last year, so I have like a little bit of an insight into the freshman and college people, or whatever they did afterwards, that students went to Ivy League universities this fall and found that they were easy. School's not hard. And they learned the stuff they needed to know to be so successful at our schools. And so I guess I feel heartened to see this. And one of the things that makes me feel heartened is the focus on the whole child, and the focus on the change, which I do believe is a change in the last decade, which is that when we moved here, I believed, based on the my reading of school community minutes, watching things, that the emphasis in the school district was only on the highest-performing kids, the kids who could get into Ivy League schools, the kids who were going on to a classical, you know, that, that, you know, that, that, that day. And in the 10 years, particularly since Challenge Success has come, that's not to say that we have dumbed down our standards, or that we have abandoned excellence, it's to say that we've said that kids who might not be headed to Harvard, or Boston College, or wherever, still have value, and that we care about them, and that we care about them as much as we care about the kid who's going to the Naval Academy. And we care about all of them. And so I guess for folks who are worried that our schools no longer support the highest-achieving students, that's just not true. It's just not true.
And Maggie, I would offer, too, that the rankings question that keeps coming up, unfortunately, the ranking is not correct. There was misinformation, not only for our school, but other schools. So I did cancel my subscription to that magazine, because if it's not actually reporting, I don't see the point of paying for it. But I mean, I just want everyone to be well aware.
And, you know, in speaking in the last couple of weeks with community members, who, you know, that gets their attention, and understandably so, there's a website, Niche, I think, niche.com, and we're currently number five, I believe, in Niche. And the reason that we're not number one is because we have a lack of diversity, and our cafeteria food does not get the best A pluses. And that is no shade on our wonderful cafeteria folks, but bigger school districts have more resources to do that sort of thing. I just, I can't say enough things about, you know, recently, our science, was it robotics team?
Yes.
Like, won. They won the whole thing. Like, you can't have a team that wins everything if you have a crappy science department. It's just not true, you know? Looking at our AP scores, most students who take the AP classes at Dover Sherburne High School get fours or fives. And the ones who don't, the change that's been made in the last decade, I'll use ap.gov as an example, you didn't used to be able to take ap.gov if you didn't get As in all your classes. You just couldn't take it. Now, you can go and say, I really care about government, I really care about civics, I know I've struggled in history, but world history is different than ap.gov, could you let me in that class? And typically, the answer will be yes. But that means that maybe that's a student who's not going to get an A, but they still want the challenge. Isn't that what we want? Because that hurts our rankings. So, you know, I am very deeply grateful for this work. I'm grateful that we're a district, you know, you read this bullet point, courses including AP Computer Science, Financial Literacy, and Forensic Science. To put together an AP Comp Sci program in a school district that runs on a street is no small feat. You've got to send a teacher for training, you've got to make sure that person actually is competent to teach it, because you're not just, you know, trying a new career, you have to really understand that stuff. And, you know, when I've spoken to students this year, financial literacy is the most popular class at the high school, and you can take it as your math class, or you can take it as an elective. And so this flexibility has been huge. So I just, I can't let the night go by without saying, there has not been an abandonment of excellence in the work that's going on in this high school, and I don't see an abandonment of it in this plan either, because I see that there's room for both ends, for us to continue to think about what can we do to really push the boundaries of academic excellence and provide our kids with the, you know, all the A-plus experiences we want kids to have, while not reducing our value on students who might be headed in a different direction. So, or in lots of different directions. I just, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Others?
Well said, Maggie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said, and I'm going to add one tiny thing. I also was going to kind of let this slide thinking, this is a solid document, and I love the structure of it. And in thinking through, it reminds me of last year when we were saying, wow, a district kind of really report card, kind of something like this would help everyone feel aligned, pre-K through 12, and across Dover Sherburne Regional, and understand why we're doing this and how the pieces fit together. I think this, you know, though it is rightfully focused on the academic piece, it's, you know, there's so much to be said for the extracurriculars as well, but this is a great job academically. The piece I also love is that there's just about as many areas for growth stated as there are strengths. So, we're humble and we're realistic, and we're saying, this is where we can focus our energy. I think the guiding questions are very bold and impressive, and I think, you know, that's a concise way to have that cohesive conversation around something and action steps we'd like to take as a district. So, thank you again. It's a ton of work, but it's really valuable.
Thank you. And obviously, people can read this word for word, letter for letter, and there'll be a test on it at some point. But I do want to point out that, in the feedback that I got in the survey, through the parent feedback, some of it was even addressed to me, Beth, you are not listening. And I do want to say that I think I captured the whole spectrum of voices in here. The first paragraph, if you would just humor me for a minute and let me read it, or actually, it's the first strength, my apologies. "The Dover Sherburne Public Schools are rooted in academic excellence and committed to sustained success and continual improvement. By way of an academically rich and rigorous curriculum, extensive enrichment events and activities, highly competitive athletic teams and clubs, and a strong fine and performing arts program, students have an array of opportunities to develop their intellectual, physical, and artistic abilities. Evidenced by multiple measures, including standardized test scores, graduation rates, college enrollment, and alumni accounts, students acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to thrive in post-secondary life. As reported by multiple interviewees and survey submissions, the schools are the community's greatest asset, and are the reason most families choose to live and raise their children in Dover and Sherburne." So, I heard that, I understand that. My husband graduated 20x years ago, that will continue. And there's also bullets in here about the wanting to focus on the core math, science, reading, writing, heard and included, and there's also, you know, mentions the conversations that have come up around diversity, equity, inclusion, and that needs to continue because it has not been formally settled in terms of a vision moving forward. So all of the voices are in here. Thank you.
Others?
I don't envy your job this summer for prioritizing how, where to start. Some of it, great choices.
I would also, just as sort of as I think ahead to our next agenda item, and having spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks reflecting on the year that Superintendent McCoy has had, this is especially astounding, given that you've put this all together while running the school district every day, and doing all of the things, including the HR responsibilities that are on your plate. And so, thank you, because this is above and beyond.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I thank you, Beth, for your efforts at listening to all of the voices. It's my belief that to set up a dichotomy between academic excellence and our efforts to create an inclusive environment where students feel a sense of belonging and community in our schools, where we value empathy and compassion, is a false narrative. And I don't believe that that captures the pulse of our community. I really do believe that this is a thoughtful and comprehensive view, and I feel encouraged that any strategic plan that evolves from these findings will reflect our district's strengths and take us where we need to go. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, our superintendent evaluation. I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent evaluation subcommittee to lead us through this next part of our...
Great. Thank you.
Can I repeat again?
Sure. So, we have some slides, you can see. So the superintendent evaluation process is one of the processes that the school committee oversees in addition to policy and budget. We use the Massachusetts Department of Education Superintendent Evaluation Process, which is a two-part system. Part of it is the goals that were set at the beginning of the year, the district goals, the educator and student learning goals, which you'll see more about shortly, and the standard competencies that DESI uses across the state. And you can look at that rubric, you can find it online, if you're interested in learning more. There are a lot of competencies and a lot of tasks related to each of those. It's a year-long cycle, which we began in the fall, and we have been finishing up this spring. The next slide, please. Thank you. So the Massachusetts Superintendent Evaluation Process has a rating system. The goals are not rated on a scale. We have descriptors of exceeded, met, significant progress, and some progress, as well as no progress. Some goals might still be in process, they're not going to be things we can accomplish in one year. The standards that are set forth by the state are rated on a scale, exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory. According to DESI, the exemplary rating is reserved for exceptional practice that serves as a model statewide for superintendents, or even beyond the state. The next slide, please. So, at our meeting last month, we talked about this briefly. Each member of the three committees completes their own superintendent evaluation forms, and looks at the goals and looks at the standards. However, the superintendent has one evaluator, and in our case, that is the joint committees. So, we have a superintendent subcommittee that's formed with a goal to collect all of this data, aggregate it in an agreed-upon format, and create narratives that bring together each member's feedback. Last month, members with specific feedback they wanted to offer, the superintendent were able to do that at our joint meeting. Several people chose to read statements at that time. Tonight, we're sharing the results with Ms. McCoy and all the members of the compiled data from all three committees.
The goals. Judy, do you want to talk about the first two goals?
I am not prepared.
Okay.
I didn't think I was going to be called on for...
Sorry.
That's okay.
Just as a point of clarification, Amanda, I think when you said last month, we're actually referring to earlier this month, though it might seem a long time ago. April 4th, I want to say, at our meeting that we held at the Medco Office, that we had sort of part one of two of this...
Thank you. Sarah, that's right. Sure.
So, within the goals that we set up at the beginning of the school year, one of them was the student learning goal, and the goal was that by late spring, the district will have broad recognition by key stakeholder groups about its most critical needs, and a widely understood process underway to identify strategies and goals that will address those needs most effectively, and the measures that will be used to assess progress. And so, one thing that will, it says met and significant progress. As all of the evaluators, you know, and our job is really to compile it, looked at the individual steps on those goals, the overarching score was in that each of the individual goals was met. But then, when folks went back and looked at the larger goal, it came back with a significant progress. And we attribute that kind of discrepancy to the fact that a lot of that work was just presented tonight. And so, you know, I think that in the line between significant progress and met, we're pretty close. The second goal, which was best professional practice goal, was to keep the district moving forward towards this year's transition in leadership by working with principals and other leaders to ensure that meaningful progress is made on district and school goals, and that goal was met. It was, you know, everyone had a consensus that that was met. And then, Judy, how about the district improvement goals, of which there were multiple, Golly will talk about.
The district improvement goals, as Maggie said, there were multiple, and overall, it was significant progress. I'll go over each of them. Develop skills in strategy development, data analysis, and instructional leadership by actively engaging in the first year of the new superintendent induction program. This is met. The district will identify common best practices associated with challenge success, the portrait of a graduate, and culturally responsive pedagogy in order to develop a clear vision for teaching and learning. With feedback from stakeholders, the district will then outline a measured path forward in support of this vision by way of an updated strategic plan, which was met. Next one is, the district will review findings from the equity audit, and incorporate goals and action steps into the next iteration of the strategic plan in order to foster a school community free from bias and discrimination, and to ensure a sense of belonging and equitable outcomes for all DS students. Additionally, educators will engage in a K to 12 curriculum review. This is met. The district will continue to refine its multi-tiered system of support to ensure that all students have access to differentiated instruction, targeted intervention, and evidence-based resources in support of their academic, social, and emotional development.
And then, when we looked at the aggregate for what folks gave for feedback on the district improvement goals as a whole, that was determined to be significant progress. And again, we attributed that to the fact that the year isn't over, and some of these things aren't finished, just because it's only the end of April. So, overall, in terms of the next slide, for Superintendent McCoy's performance for each of the standards, overall, in the aggregate, members ranked at proficient for all the categories, and including the overall performance. And again, you know, it's interesting when you look at the guidance from the state on this document, they even say for a first-year superintendent, don't even use the needs improvement category, use the words developing. And I think it's notable that even with the instructions to our members to use the thought in their mind of developing, really, the scores were pretty solidly proficient from everybody, and in the aggregate. There are some areas, and it's on your report, where people really felt were exemplary, and sort of that example to others in the state, and even wider. And then, the second part of the work for us is to aggregate folks' commentary and analysis into the different areas, and so we just wanted to share that now. Let me share that Superintendent McCoy consistently makes curriculum and instruction the cornerstone of her work, and is a leader who sets an example for educators of what it means to hold high expectations for each student in our schools. Her work this year with the new assistant superintendent, Demi Conklin, has demonstrated her ability to lead collaboratively, share, and delegate responsibilities while growing her role, in her role leading our districts. Superintendent McCoy models and demands that all educators hold high expectations for their own practice and for their students' performance. She has led opportunities for building leaders and educators to participate in high-quality professional development, both from outside experts, and also has leveraged the talent of her own exceptional educators to share best practices with one another. Along with the assistant superintendent, she has worked to improve the classroom observation process, to ensure the focus is on student learning, use of data, and that observations result in specific actionable feedback that directly impacts student learning. District educators are all aware of the goals of the district, and work collaboratively to align curriculum with one another, with the Massachusetts frameworks and with Massachusetts frameworks, while also ensuring that their curriculum is able to address multiple student needs, interests, and talents, even when these exceed stated mass framework goals. The curriculum review process that continues under Mr. Conklin's leadership ensures that each curriculum area is examined for improvement on a regular schedule. Ms. McCoy has modeled the use of multiple measures of data for educators in determining student performance. She synthesizes data from multiple sources and uses it with her team to determine district's priorities and to craft a successor strategic plan built on our current strengths and with a goal for continuous improvement. Adoption of tools such as the Panorama Data Dashboard have helped district educators to coordinate focus and align improvement efforts. For management operations, do you want to share?
So, these are comments in the section for management and operations. Superintendent McCoy has demonstrated that she is effectively managing the operations of our three school districts in order to provide an effective and resource-efficient learning environment, while also looking forward to how we might do things differently in order to be more effective with our limited resources. Another comment was Superintendent McCoy has gone above and beyond to make sure our district has ample plans and procedures to address multiple operational, emotional, safety... to address multiple operational, emotional, safety, and health examples of issues that have been brought to the table and improved to campus security, need for space analysis at the region, installation of ADA-compliant future seating as a surf field this year, creation of an HR director position to ensure compliance with legal requirements and smooth the personnel management process, analysis of the middle school schedules as well as the schedules of special educators in order to create a more effective learning environment. Now, the comment was Superintendent McCoy has shown proficiency in her understanding of the law, ethics, and policy standard in numerous ways. Her response to public records requests, her dealing with negotiations in meetings with collective bargaining units, and in her community webinar presentations are some examples. It is clear that Ms. McCoy is extremely dedicated to this area of management and operations. Ms. McCoy has unfailingly been clear, respectful, and responsive to any legal concerns from board and community members. Even when making difficult decisions and sharing unwelcome views, Ms. McCoy is prepared, confident, and empathetic. She is meticulous about following all applicable laws and has shown herself to be a person of deep empathy.
For Standard Three, the family and community engagement standard. Narrative comments included: Superintendent McCoy has prioritized communication and engagement with our community and families during her entrance into the superintendency. She has effectively promoted the learning and growth of each student through her outreach to families, community organizations, and other members of our community who support the district. Ms. McCoy has consistently emphasized the importance of good family and community connections in all her communications with her faculty and other district leaders, the school committee, and directly with families and community members. She is aware of and respectful of family and community concerns and is wholeheartedly determined to address them in a comprehensive and respectful manner. Her work communicating the findings of the recent Equity Audit, its relationship to district initiatives to improve in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and how that will impact students is admirable. Superintendent McCoy is an exceptional communicator, both verbally and in writing. Superintendent McCoy's warm communication style conveys comfort and knowledge that everything is being handled with professionalism. Her presentations at school committee meetings are clear, informative, and always tie back to the vision of our district and how we are making progress toward our goals. Ms. McCoy is determined to proactively engage stakeholders in the district's work through multiple modes. For example, newsletters, through documentation, in-person forums, and webinars. Her communications to the community are informative, accessible, comprehensive, and interesting. Her goal is always to open up and welcome more voices to the table and to ensure that every person feels heard and respected, even when decisions don't go their way. Her response to incidents of violence and hate this year at school demonstrated a commitment to promptly and directly address difficult issues, publicly denounce hate actions, and to follow up with educational opportunities for members of the community. While she didn't organize all the responses herself, she supports and facilitates resources to ensure that our schools are places where hate and discrimination have no home.
Standard Four, professional culture. Superintendent McCoy has elevated the professional culture at DS. She has led through example by promoting and modeling the importance of innovative learning. She has been bold in advocating for cultural proficiency within and outside of the classroom. Her entry process has been a model for continuous learning and reflection. Despite facing difficult situations, Superintendent McCoy always maintains a professional, welcoming, and inclusive manner. Superintendent McCoy has presented at various meetings, for example, opening day for the district, school committee meetings, community meetings open to the public. And she is consistently comfortable, confident, and effective in these settings. In addition, Superintendent McCoy keeps all school committee members in the loop about anything unusual going on in the district, whether it is the possibility of a snow day, an HVAC issue, or the occurrence of a heat incident on the regional campus promptly and efficiently. She sets an excellent tone for all educators and the district's staff. Superintendent McCoy has managed much conflict outside of the public eye this year. But she has also had opportunities to showcase her skill in conflict management publicly, specifically at community forums held in person and virtually to discuss the rationale and scope of the district's DEI work. Superintendent McCoy has remained calm, professional, and focused on what's best for all children in very difficult circumstances. Through this work, Superintendent McCoy embodies the attributes of professionalism, setting high expectations, and a culture of continuous improvement for students and educators.
And finally, there's a section at the front of the rubric for summative comments. And so this is a synthesis of those summative comments. Superintendent McCoy began this year with a strong vision and plan for listening and learning. She has made significant progress toward our district goals, setting a strategic path, equity, and supporting all students, and continued the positive momentum of DS' goals during another post-COVID year when community caregivers and students are still working to find a new normal. Ms. McCoy has championed bringing joy into the classroom and taking the silver linings and lessons learned from the pandemic to focus on best practices in teaching and learning. Ms. McCoy's inclusive, forward-thinking vision of education for all students includes a strong focus on academics and an understanding that each child's journey looks different. Throughout the year, she has brought people together to ensure that DS can succeed in its mission to inspire, challenge, and support all students as they discover and pursue their full potential. The three district improvement goals adopted by the school committees in spring 2022 have provided both structure and opportunity for Ms. McCoy's student learning and professional goals. For District Goal One, Setting a Strategic Path, Ms. McCoy has expertly involved Assistant Superintendent Denny Conklin. Mr. Conklin is a curriculum specialist who has worked effectively with the region to coach and guide staff and building administrators so that our curriculum meets the current state standards while honoring values from challenge success, culturally responsive teaching, and the DS portrait of a graduate. The March 30th community webinar highlighted the abundance of planning, resources, and reflection that go into our curricular programming. Goal Two relates to our Equity Audit and is closely aligned with Standard Three, Family and Community Engagement. This standard has been a priority for the leadership team, particularly as it relates to the Equity Audit and our continuing DEI work. Ms. McCoy has engaged a strong team of leaders, including DS and Metco alum Dr. Carlos Hoyt. She has invested countless hours in planning and communication around the Equity Audit and our continuing DEI work. Ms. McCoy is an excellent communicator, genuinely seeks consensus. She has reached out to a variety of stakeholders, meeting them wherever they are, in person and virtually. She has been both proactive in her outreach and community education efforts and responsive to feedback from the community about their needs. Meetings have been welcoming and well-structured, yet fluid. Even as meetings were in progress, Ms. McCoy recognized community needs and remained flexible and open, providing information and following up on questions. Every community concern has been publicly addressed. This work has not been without its challenges. Ms. McCoy has faced community criticism and opposition with grace and civility. Her thoughtful and thorough work in communication and community engagement serves as a model for all of us. Goal Three, Supporting All Students, has allowed Ms. McCoy to continue the work begun during our special education audit. Our multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, is still evolving, yet has already resulted in district financial savings. Our MTSS programs provide targeted support, both academic and social-emotional, meeting a broad range of student needs across the district. Ms. McCoy has balanced these big-picture undertakings while maintaining the day-to-day operations of the districts, negotiating contracts with all of the collective bargaining units, hiring and evaluating school leaders, addressing multiple public records requests, working with three school committees across two towns, spending time in each of the four schools, and undergoing her own professional development and training in the new Superintendent Induction Program. Ms. McCoy's professional practice goal encompasses this program, which has been very well structured and articulated in school committee meetings and communications. Though she is not new to Dover Sherburne School District, it is with special appreciation that she has structured this formal growth opportunity into her goal-setting for this year. Ms. McCoy has modeled continuous growth, learning, and reflection throughout her entry process and in her deft handling of the many challenges she has faced this year, demonstrating the poise and mastery of a more seasoned superintendent. She is off to an inspiring start, and we commend her on building a strong foundation for her tenure as Dover Sherburne Superintendent.
Before we turn it over to questions and comments, do you know anyone on the committee have other questions or comments about the synthesis, because this is the first time they've seen it as well? We used a rounding method. So if something was... We talked about that in our workshop. If something, you know, that's where we came up with the numbers. Any comments?
May I say thank you? Thank you. So first of all, thank you. I know that each one of you, as an individual, had to complete this whole process. And then there was a committee that had to take 16 reports and synthesize that. So I know it was an individual effort as well as a group effort. It took a lot of time. So thank you for doing that and providing feedback to me. I also wanted to recognize, you know, the other folks that have supported me this year. My coach, John Sills, through this new Superintendent Induction Program. I'm also working with a mentor who's a colleague in another town and the local superintendents, who whenever I call them, text them, or email them and say, "Help," are right there next to me. As you mentioned in this report and as you've heard in many of the things that you've mentioned as work that I have done, it's not me in isolation. If you look at the superintendent rubric around curriculum and planning, many of that falls to Mr. Conklin. Finance and Operations, that's Ms. Vittori's work. Student Support, obviously, is thanks to Kate McCarthy and all of his work on engagement and community culture. So I cannot complete that rubric without all of these folks, and I appreciate them more than I could say at this moment in time, as well as the principals who are doing the work at the building level. I'm my own toughest critic. So as, you know, modeling reflection, I put a survey out to the leadership team, the 17-member leadership team, and asked for feedback in a number of areas so that they could tell me what I'm doing well and where I could be more supportive in growth. And as I was reading through the feedback at home, I came across one piece of constructive feedback. And it hit me. I was like, wow, that is... That's right. But wow, is it direct and succinct. And it was because it was my own that I had done. I had written myself a note of things that I want to do that I think I'm, you know, progressing on and other things I could do differently. I was like, wow, that person really nailed it. But it was because I didn't feel like I had to write myself fluffy sentences. I was like, whoa. And I was like, oh, that was me. I'm always open to constructive feedback. I appreciate all the positive that's in here. And there's lots of it to be grateful for. My parents watched the April 4th meeting where you gave some of the feedback, and they were both in tears by the end. And my kids were like, oh, mom, look at that. So thank you. And I would love to have an opportunity either individually or through Maggie's efforts to know if there was any areas that were, you know, less than proficient or areas where I can work that either I didn't provide enough evidence to show that I am proficient or that I need to grow and develop in order to get there. So, but thank you. I appreciate this. And I will probably be more thoughtful when I'm not publicly on camera in front of an audience and I can actually read and listen.
And also, just for folks watching at home or folks in the audience, it is a unique and very odd process. The superintendent evaluation in Massachusetts must be an entirely public process. So there is no, like in every other job ever, opportunity for you to sit with the people who are supervising you and have a candid conversation. It's something that we all have to do out in... And that's because Massachusetts is a Commonwealth that's very committed to transparency. It's a big part of what the Commonwealth is all about. That has some pros and has some cons. And I can say, you know, those of us who were charged with synthesizing the information, this is the feedback that we got. And just like our charges, if there were things in there that were, you know, more pointed, that they would appear in the evaluation. I think looking at the criteria and looking at the different areas of the rubric, it's just clear that you've paid a lot of attention to them and provided us with lots of opportunities and evidence for feedback.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Anybody who wants to be applied to be a superintendent, this is one of the most awkward parts of the job.
Do we have to... I didn't... Do we have to move to accept it as a... Because this is the first time they're seeing it. Is that an act required? Do you know?
I don't know.
I've never... I don't think we've ever...
We don't have to do that. Okay. Then we can just move on.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will have to say, just as an outside person who's done this a lot before, you guys did a great job. I have to commend you for this product because this is like one of the best ones I've ever seen. No, it really is. You guys, I have to say. I was worried. I brought it over to Maggie, but you guys have had this job. So I hope that you pat yourselves on the back because it's amazing to hear you read and to think that was all of your guys' input. This is pretty great.
Okay. I can't imagine higher praise than that. Thank you.
I just want to also acknowledge the presence on this committee of an English teacher. It's easier to synthesize things in a way that also made sentences.
It also makes writing a report of entry findings very stressful. Well, I'm not here as an English.
And we thank all of you who served on the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee for taking all of our collective feedback and putting it into such a comprehensive document. So to Maggie, to Amanda, to Judy, to Goli, thank you very much for shepherding this very important work. All right. And with that, we have reached the end of our open session this evening. Next on our agenda is a joint executive session for which we need to take a vote by committee with Dover and make a motion to enter into joint executive session, not to return to open session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Dover Sherburne Educational Association, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position. Is there a second to that motion from Dover? Thank you, Colleen. Any discussion? All right. And on this, we have to do a roll call vote. So I'll start just as I see you around the table. Goli. All right.
Ms. Grossman, yes.
Colleen? And Sarah Gutierrez done. Yes. Amanda, would you like to go ahead and make a motion for Sherburne?
Sure. Could I please have a motion to convene adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and not to reconvene in open session? Thank you. Gita, second?
Second, Dennis.
And we can do a roll call vote. So I'll start with you, Dennis.
Christine.
Amanda Brown, yes.
Gita Verso, yes.
Kristina Appley, yes.
Thank you.
Regional School Committee, could I have a motion to do all the things that Sarah interviewed just said?
Go ahead.
Mark Keely, so moved.
Thank you, Mark. Second, Judy.
Judy Miller, second.
Thank you, Judy. Any discussion? Okay. Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
Mark Keely?
Mark Keely, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes. It is 8:42.
Thank you, everyone. This concludes our public meeting this evening. Our three committees will now enter executive session at 8:42.